As we would be, so our microphones are not live. They're green, so they're good. Are yours green down here?
All green here, yeah.
Okay.
Green to go. What's that? Seth, Seth can hear me.
That's what you came up with.
Good afternoon, Earl.
There you go. Yeah, and I can't hear you, so it helps. Well, this has got to be a weird moment for you, young man. You have everybody.
It's been a long time.
Yeah. And like being in the principal's office with the teachers and saying, "I didn't do it. I didn't do it."
But I think too for our colleagues, my goodness, it's a weird setup that we have here. But we don't really have a space that's any bigger than this.
Yeah. Yeah, also before the days of Zoom and everything, and we would just kind of meet where we could.
Right. Could have met West Campus, I guess.
We thought about that, but I talked to Don a little bit about that, and you'd have to rush back here for the 5:30 meeting and be present here in this boardroom. Get across town.
Yeah. All right. Well, are we at 4:30?
The phone auditor says it is.
All right. Good afternoon. It's 4:30. We're at Monday, August 30th, 2021, and we have a work session here. We have distinguished guests with us here in our boardroom, and we also are virtual. So we do have Zoom also. Some folks may be in attendance virtually. So the work session today is with the supervisors from Delaware County, and the topic is going to be our 280 agreement relationships and just kind of a general conversation about the wisdom of the agreements that you've enacted with previous board members that allow us to share services and with Anthony and with Craig. So Anthony, I'm going to just kind of turn it over to you, kind of lead us through what we want to be discussing today. We are without Don Sherman, who's our HR administrator. She's ill, so.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess I'll start by, I'm Anthony Barja, county engineer here. And this is Craig Davis, our assistant engineer in Delaware County, who we're all sharing here. And you've had a chance to meet all three supervisors from Delaware County, right? So let's see, about 2015 is when we started this arrangement of sharing, Craig and myself. We came up with, I believe, was a one-year agreement at that point to start with, and just kind of see how it worked. Kind of a trial period. At that time, we talked about trying to meet on kind of a quarterly basis, and I think we've had a couple, three times that first year. Maybe didn't quite do every quarter. But you know, we intended to meet, and then as things, I think, progressed, in my opinion, pretty well. I just started to spread out a little bit and not meeting as often as, you know, maybe we should have. So I think this is a good chance to kind of reconvene, especially with new board members on both sides, and just kind of talk about how things are going. Again, Craig and I have a 280 agreement that's on a, right now, on every other, or yeah, every two-year basis, that it's renewed. It was just renewed last November, I believe, so we have another year to go on this current agreement.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'll just kind of open it up there if there's any thoughts on either side on things you'd like to see improved or changed in any way.
If it's all right, I'll go ahead. I was skeptical at first. We'd never shared. An engineer, and on top of that, we're a small county compared to the U. So I was really concerned that the big county would absorb our little Delaware County, and it only took me the first year to be totally satisfied. It went so smooth. Anthony and Craig are awesome to share between the two. We've always found that we could call Anthony, didn't matter which county it was in. Well, we don't have exact schedule because of changes. But we still call Anthony anytime we wanted. And if he was busy, he'd call us right back, and so. For me, it has been a huge positive for Delaware County. I can't speak to you, Board, but. I think it's. Great, and if we can add one more phase to that, and Anthony and Craig. Are in line with that, I have no problem because of how well it's worked.
Right. And Jeff, what do you mean by the next phase of it? What's that? What do you mean by add another phase?
Of the surveyor.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's on the agenda today, discuss a little bit.
Right. And I understand that's maybe one of our main motivations to kind of get together at this time. I think certainly, Anthony, I would never know there was a shared agreement because it's seamless. So that's how I feel coming on as a newer supervisor, that you've been incredibly responsive, and the position has worked well, where I've never seen anything be lost or dropped or not attended to. I feel like we have, I feel like we definitely have a full-time supervisor. And as I said, I don't know Craig as well, but maybe that's a different face that, you know, works more with Delaware County. I know you're just here at our meetings, and you're the person that I call with my questions. But so I think that we should probably do some kind of a formal evaluation at some point, because it's fun to do them when things are good, and then you have kind of what you want to do, and we can do that. And Don would need to be necessary to kind of step us through whatever that would look like. But to the point of a surveyor, I mean, I, we have discussed that initially, and I would let my colleagues kind of, you know, talk as well. If we could duplicate this kind of customer service.
Make sure we're comfortable with the current state of play, and I am, but I would like to give everyone familiarity to catch up before we add another item. I think it would be helpful. I've been very pleased since I've been on the board. It's worked very well. But this board is probably less familiar with what Craig does, and so possibly maybe a little more background experience as far as the work you've been doing for Dubuque County and/or Delaware County, because we know there's been good work, but like supervisor Dunne said, we don't see you every week like we do Anthony.
Sixty-three sets of bridges.
Sixty-three?
Yeah. That's in five of your rooms, five years. All the in-service bridge inspections. You have to crawl under every one, meet federal guidelines.
So between two counties, approximately, what, 450 bridges?
Wow.
We have to inspect those on an every other year basis generally, some that are a little more frequent than that. Craig is covering all that. I'm the program manager for the bridge inspection program. He's the inspector that actually crawls under these things and looks at everything. Pulls out all the paperwork for him, sends it to Anthony. Anthony approves it.
And then.
And that's a huge cost saving for.
Both sides, when it comes to the amount of bridges that we're taking care of, plus the inspection, it's quite a value. And for us, was it sixty-three combined or just Dubuque County?
Just Dubuque.
Just Dubuque County?
Just Dubuque.
Yeah, and so I would assume the majority of your work's been, as far as number of bridges, it's been Dubuque County. Maybe not the majority, but.
Plan-wise, Dubuque County, but. Time-wise, I do all the construction inspection in Delaware.
Okay.
Summers are basically Delaware County.
Yeah.
And then winters.
When you're designing.
For both.
Yeah, I mean, I have just a recent comparison to another engineering firm for conservation related to bridge, and I've been always pleased with your designs and cost effectiveness of those designs. Has saved the county a lot of money.
I think the cheapest is probably what, thirty-five to forty thousand per set?
Yeah.
If you went out there. And you know, the more in-depth it gets, of course.
Yeah, and sometimes the creativity as well, the design of the railroad cars and other things, those have been tremendous. We've done half a dozen of those.
Probably, maybe closer to ten of them.
Ten almost?
Yeah.
So very pleased with that, and I just wanted to make sure we covered that because we just don't get to see you and appreciate your work.
Thanks.
I would echo my colleague's sentiments. I've been extremely happy with Anthony. I've dealt with him for years before coming here because I was a Dubuque County deputy sheriff, so I dealt with him there, and I couldn't be happier with the arrangement. I think it's working, and I hope this next phase works as seamlessly as this one does because it's a win-win for both counties, I think.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, and I couldn't have said it any better than you all did. I don't know how it would work, but with these guys, it certainly has worked well. And my head's off before we set this up initially, it started just before I came on the board. It's, like you say, seamless. It's been excellent.
I was told that Tom Hancock had a play in hand in it early on, but I was before my time, so maybe you can echo if you guys were working with Tom and others.
If it had been anybody other than Anthony and Craig, if it had not been, they would have worked nearly as well. They worked great.
So why don't we talk about the next phase of, that we have a need to have, to share a surveyor? Is that kind of our thought?
Yeah, to give a little background to that, Brad Berger, who was our land surveyor in Delaware County, he left for a DOT position back in, what, June or July? First part of June. And so we've explored some different ideas of, do we go out for a full-time surveyor? You know, do we try to maybe use our, and the surveyor was also an inspector as well. So it's kind of hard to find somebody, first of all, that's willing to jump to a county for a surveyor position. They're just kind of rare to find out there, and then somebody who wants to do inspection at the same time. So for now, we've been using one of our maintenance staff members to help with inspection this summer. In the meantime, we've just been exploring, what can we do to maybe, should we save a little of the cost on a full-time surveyor? And then pretty quickly, it came to mind that Wyatt Anderson is a, would be a perfect fit. He's our land surveyor for Dubuque County. He currently works 32 hours a week for Dubuque County. He has a side business, a private business, that he works, he usually takes off on Mondays, so he'll work his side business from Saturday through Monday, and then come in for Dubuque County the rest of the week. I approached him with this idea of if he'd be interested in even trying this, and he said, yes, he would. He kind of gave me a budget figure that he'd have to look at to take on the 40-plus hours a week that he would have to do because it would cut into greatly in his private business. And yeah, just kind of discussion led from there, and we've had a few discussion, you know, times with you guys, with Don Sherman and myself, and just, you know, kind of what the need is, where he's at budget-wise, and so yeah, I guess that's kind of the background on it. I think he's another guy that would fit really well with the sharing mold. He's a hard worker. He would easily, you know, I think just seamless, make this seamless as well going back and forth with the needs that we have. He wouldn't be needed as much in Delaware County versus Dubuque County, but you know, there is a need to have a land surveyor at times, you know, even if to have somebody on retainer to be able to call upon them to do work within like a day. If I were to call a private land surveyor, he might be waiting a month or more, quite honestly. They're just so booked up, and you can see what Dave Schneider does all the time. He's very, very busy. So yeah, I guess that's kind of where we are at now. I would like to see us move that way and share him in both directions, and just maybe even put it as a trial period, you know, for another year, kind of like how Craig and I started, and just see how it works. If it doesn't pan out very well, then we could always go back to the original situation.
I'd be open to that.
The trial period?
For a trial period, for a year. I mean, when I start out like this, you don't see how it works. If it's not going to work, it's not going to work. I mean, that's.
And he would be one of the first people that would tell me it's not working, you know? He's very honest about that, so you know, I think we could assess that a year from now and see how well that's going.
Maybe you could help frame out what would work, and maybe in the context of your current, you know, agreements, as you're familiar with them, because we have a 60-40 switch or 70-30, one of those percentages. What would be proposed for the surveyor?
So I'm 70-30. I'm 70% Dubuque, 30% Delaware County. Craig is 60% Delaware County, 40% Dubuque. My thought was to make Wyatt kind of a mirror image of Craig, 60% Dubuque, 40% Delaware County. And have, you know, have, I think that's a good sharing percentage. I could see that being useful to both sides as a cost savings. Also be very similar to what Craig is. Craig does a lot of his work in Delaware County, although he's working for Dubuque County because of this electronic age we're in. Wyatt can do much of the same thing. He can do a lot of research online and through phone calls and emails, and go over to Delaware County as needed. But he can mainly be stationed out of Dubuque County, working towards Delaware County as we need him.
Would that work for Delaware County and supervisors? That relationship?
Absolutely. And I can tell you, I spent 20 years with the secondary road department, and before we had a certified surveyor, I can tell you what the cost was and the inconvenience. And the first time we hired one. It really made a huge difference for our county. So.
But it means life. And then maybe, how do, without going to the agreement, maybe you can jump and tell me, how do the benefits work? So I assume the salary is the percentage we talked about. Are the benefit calculations just costed out the same way?
Same way. So we cost out total benefits, and then we share that percentage, you know, back and forth, just like, so for me, it's 70-30. Delaware County splits 30% of my total package.
And so, in what package? Does your package come from Dubuque? Because I'm sure our benefit programs are different. And so yours comes from Dubuque? Craig's comes from?
Delaware County.
Delaware County.
And Wyatt's would obviously come from Dubuque.
Dubuque?
Yeah. But he would remain a Dubuque County employee. By 2080, he would be shared with Delaware County.
Okay. Yeah, I was generally paper of it. The piece I got hung up on was some of the compensation and maybe how we kind of unfolded with the discussion. So certainly the cost, when shared, is possibly lower when you just look at it from your own perspective, but if you look at the whole number, it's going up. And what I was asking Don and others, you to provide some additional metrics and/or comparables related to surveyors so that made sure that we're in the range. And I wasn't yet comfortable at that point.
Sure. I know I talked to Wyatt just a little bit about, you know, kind of the discussion we had about going right away to that full top dollar number. We did talk about maybe try to do like a two-step process, like a two-year stepped-up process to get there. You know, also with the analysis that I think Don has done a little bit, I've done a little bit as well, just looking out there what the market is, it's hard to find these guys of what really they're doing. market is, it's hard to find these guys of what really they're doing or what they're being compensated at. Um, the other one that I keep kind of coming back to is that just that retainer, um, sort of, uh, position. If you want to pay somebody to be on retainer, you, you know, you're going to pay a little more to have them there and ready to go. Um, otherwise, you know, again, if I were to just call a surveyor up to do something that I need done within the next week, you're going to struggle with that. Um, so some of it is maybe paying a little bit of a higher dollar amount, have that person on retainer and ready to go, you know, for that professional service you need. Um, but again, I, yeah, I guess the overall number is, is, is a jump from what, what he's at now, but it would be a cost savings to both counties.
So what were the numbers, Anthony?
So, so, uh, in talking to Wyatt, the number he would need is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to?
One fifteen.
One fifteen. Now, he was willing to go to one oh five to start with, a year later go to one ten, and then a year after that, uh, go to, go to one fifteen.
And the one fifteen, we did not find any comparables at that level. So there weren't a lot that reported back. I think maybe we could try harder, um, because I Ws probably have a bunch of them as well, so you could compare public and private. And so that's what I would like to do is just to test out that number and, you know, get it right for the parties and get it right for, you know, just comparables. Um, I, I don't know Wyatt, but I've heard good things about our surveying as well, so I'm assuming it's all, goes well. But he is in a unique position now that he's at thirty-two hours for the county and has full benefits. I don't think we have a single other employee that has that, that categorization. So we've already made concessions related to that. And if you speak to any private business owner, if they have a family insurance policy, that alone will cost you twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. And so the county's benefit, and certainly Dubuque, is, is pretty significant, um, related to benefit packages. And, uh, I, I think I'd make sure we just include all that. But if we can get the numbers right, I'm, I'm all for it.
I mean, I guess I can kind of also tell you that in, in speaking to Wyatt, um, these are really the numbers he, he's at, what he needs. For, for him to even entertain this, um, you know, anything less than that, he's probably not going to go for it.
What if we posted the position for a full-time? We won't need a full-time, post the position. Wyatt can apply, others can apply. For the number two chosen, that tests out the system. I, I don't like, I don't like, uh, singly identifying one employee, one person for a government position. Um, you know, I was appointed to my position to begin with, but there was twenty-seven others that were interviewed. And so, um, that's normally the process that we follow when we make a change. So that, that's just an idea. Um, I know it gets difficult, but if that's, if he's looking for that change and others might want that same opportunity, and we feel that there's no other opportunities, let's test that out.
Um, I have to look at the split again, but I think, you know, if you look at the, just salary-wise, let me check that out real quick. So forty percent of a hundred and fifteen thousand, it would be forty-six thousand dollars to be able to, you know, compensate Wyatt to serve Delaware County as needed. You're not going to find, you're not going to find a licensed land surveyor for that cost.
Not in, not in Dubuque or Delaware County, but this is, this is for Delaware County. So that's Delaware County's piece, and I'd like to help you, but, um, you know, it's, it's not, that's not our role necessarily to, uh, maybe change the system just to help one party. So I think it has to help both. And that's where I'm, I'm just uncomfortable on it. And I, and I don't know if others would be open to, you know, advertising, posting positions, and, and maybe find that this is absolutely the only route, and then you have more surety.
Do we know how much Wyatt currently makes?
He's currently at around sixty-nine thousand, somewhere around there. Uh, so he took, took, to proportion up to a full-time position. If he went back to forty, it's, it's around eighty-six, eighty-six thousand dollars full-time.
Not to dominate, but if you do the math on the hourly component, that's where it gets out of whack. And I remember doing that last time, and so I hate to beat this, but, you know, when you, you, you take that dollar, do that hourly on a thirty-two hours, and then if the expectation is forty or more, pick that number, and it's still a significant jump. And so, like, everyone in this room who's an employee of the county would probably like that same jump.
Well, I mean, there's a little bit of difference here. This is a professional position, and this is a greater responsibility between two counties.
I hear you, and I voted against a lot of these in the last couple of years because everyone said the same thing. But, I mean...
And at the same time, I, I was sole source for Delaware County, as Craig was sole source for Dubuque County.
Good decisions. Not arguing with that.
I understand the, uh, value of having the surveyor on staff because obviously if you need something surveyed and you can't get it done for three or four weeks, there's nothing else getting done. So whatever project they're working on is, sits until we get the surveying done. That costs a lot of money, too. Um, starting at the one oh five, it's a trial period for the first year, you know, see how it works. I don't have much of a problem with that. Um, I mean, I agree with Jay. It's kind of a big jump up to the one fifteen. It is and it isn't. I mean, it's two counties sharing costs, and both, both of us do save money in the long run. The other side of Jay's thing is, well, it would be fair to give somebody else an opportunity on it also, but he's already a county employee, so it's really just, uh, I guess, similar to a lateral transfer that he's just accepting more responsibility.
But we don't have, Dubuque County doesn't have a full-time position to post.
No.
We don't have a full-time need, so it's not something that I would favor posting. We, we're not in a search for a full-time person for Dubuque County. So that's not, I mean, I...
That'd be Delaware County posting.
Right, and so then it would be Delaware County posting, and you probably don't need a full-time person. But you are going to have to hire a full-time person at whatever the pay would be, or, or find some other way. I, I value you as partners. We have worked with you on, on many things, but doesn't cloud my impression of what we're trying to do right now. But it also tells me that the reason this works is because we work together, too, right? And I know that Anthony knows that there's going to be a good relationship with, between the boards of supervisors. So that, I have, that has value as well. Um, you know, I, I would support Wyatt being the person to make this happen, and I appreciate that he is looking at a stepped-in phase. I think we've seen change from previous discussions, kind of a, um, a meeting of the minds, kind of, to get together closer to a win for everybody. Um, and I think that that's a valuable thing. I'd like to certainly never be in jeopardy of losing Wyatt, so I'm not interested in posting this job. Um, if you feel that there's the ability to make this work, I think it's a one-year trial period. Um, and I think that the, the wage, Anthony, I would, you know, Don is obviously not here, but I would be looking at your recommendation. I think she was at the same, recognizing and also the unique values here that we're looking at. So, I mean, I, have you thought of posting this yourselves, or have you not done a search?
There's one thing, if you post something, you really don't know what's at the end of the stuff. I saw Anthony's judgment, Craig's judgment, you worked for Wyatt, um, saying you guys, boy, that you have had, I don't know how long you've worked with each other. But if I'm told he's good at what he does, that is worth a lot. And when you post something, people can put a lot of things on paper that may or may not be accurate.
Right. Right, better, better.
Not better than what we can get from people that have worked with somebody.
Right. That's...
I value that human interaction a lot, especially from people that I trust.
Right. And I think he's part of the team that's already sharing resources. I mean, I don't think you operate independent of the surveyor. He's working with you on, on projects on a daily basis, so...
Yeah, Wyatt, Wyatt does a lot of, uh...
Well, he does all our topo, what we call topo surveys of our bridges and hand side information off the grid.
Yeah, certainly. There's, there's a lot of interaction, and it's already happening between the three of us. Um, so, uh, I echo what, what Supervisor Holmer just said, that, um, um, we, we know what we have there.
Right.
Going out and trying to advertise and...
Right.
Yeah, there's some probably good people out there, but you don't know.
And I, and we, we are an open session, and so I don't want to have it feel like we're doing any kind of human resources about a particular person, right? But what I think we're saying is that we think we have a system that's unique and has been very satisfying to both counties. And as I think, Jeff, you began, Supervisor Madloff, by saying, this is another phase of that. I think a trial period lets us see if that phase is correct. We hope we don't, we hope we don't commash the whole thing, right? But, I mean, that's, I'm, I would be willing to, to work that way.
I agree with everything everyone said except for the numbers. I mean, it's, uh, very rarely in a position do you say, well, we need to increase the wage by thirty thousand dollars, and then another year or two, make it forty-five thousand dollars. It's just pretty, pretty steep, pretty quick. And so either it's way underpaid now, or we're making a pretty big leap. And it's that, you know, my experience in private sector is when you do that, guy or gal next to you is like, well, what about me? I do a good job. I'd like that percent increase. And that's when you get out of bounds. And I've said the same thing with our compensation review board that has been some over ten percent, and they just arrived here. And I'm like, so you get a ten percent raise after six months of work? That's pretty good. And so I'm cautious of that. And so that's my perspective. Um, and so I think if we just get the number right and we, we, we know that it's right because we've done comparables, then I feel comfortable.
Can just give you an example. About a month ago, we had a situation down at our Penn Center, our carney home, and we needed a survey for the gas company to be able to run a line almost a mile over to our Penn Center. And right now, the meter was a mile away up on somebody else's property, and they needed that surveyed right away. We didn't have a surveyor. And so I called one of our local surveyors. He said, Jeff, I'm six weeks out. Okay, I'll try and find something. He said, well, Delaware County has been so great to me. I will work it out. But let me know, surveyors are just so far behind. And so he did do it. He went down and got a survey, got the gas company taken care of. But that's an example of where if you had your own person on board, then that could have been accomplished a lot easier and a lot less stress worrying about it. So just an example I wanted to give you.
Large jump in this salary is because he's going to be sacrificing some of his own business for act or...
That's, I mean, I had to find out what, where he was. So that was the analysis he came up with, that for him to reduce at least a day worth of his private business, that's where he needed to be. Um, I take it that he's already kind of there with his private business. Um, I think he can be as busy as he wants to be. Uh, so that's kind of the value. And he, he may have just inflated just a little bit, who knows? But I have a feeling that his, his value has, has worth something for that one day in the private sector.
And that's the great thing about America, it's free enterprise. So he could go a hundred percent today, or last year, or the year before. So if the...
I don't want him to do that.
If the oppo, well, if the opportunity is so good in the private sector, then why, why work in the public sector would be my question. Um, and so there must be something attraction on the public sector. And so maybe it's our benefits, maybe it's our stability, maybe it's the work environment. That's what we're offering. And if you offer that and higher compensation and higher benefits, then I think public's getting out of whack with private. I think we have a lot of value. I think we have a lot of team. I think, uh, you know, to work with these two and to work with Delaware and Dubuque County, I think, is good. And to be on the government payroll, um, if you'd be at Dubuque County, full benefits, our benefits are probably the best in the state. They're the second in the county after the city of Dubuque, um, just as far as, you know, insurance and other stuff. So we have a lot to offer, and I think those are things that, you know, I, I harp on so that, uh, people are aware of them and they appreciate them because they do have a pretty hefty cost.
And the other thing I would just suggest is sometimes it seems fairest if you turn the roles around, right? So we're paying a part-time individual eighty-six thousand dollars a year to do a great job for us. If we lost that person and you had the opportunity to extend the services of your surveyor, I'm not replacing eighty-six thousand dollars a year. Maybe that's what you're paying him. Maybe the same person's doing a hundred and sixty thousand dollar a year job, if we're both hiring part-time folks. So there's something to be said for the value that you each perceive and finding something that makes the numbers work for both of us and to get the same quality. So, you know, I'm not always at the hourly wage. I think that this is a unique circumstance, and it certainly benefits the county overall to do the one-year trial.
Well, that's a great point, too. I mean, that, you could break it down to hourly wage, but, you know, many, many times, we're working about forty hours.
Exactly. And he knows that. Isn't that what he's saying? I know I'm going to be working fifty hours a week. I'm going from thirty-two to fifty.
Yep.
And I will do that with a smile on my face, with great service to both counties.
Absolutely. And I, I would never complain about it, you know, but I think Craig and I, you know, we're, we're probably at average for a week. Um, not, not to mention all the emails and phone calls on the weekends, you know.
Sorry.
No, that's, that's, that's what I, why I took this job. So, I mean, I don't complain about that one bit.
I'll quit sending them to you on Sundays. I'm sorry.
I've, I've started with Anthony, please don't open this till Monday, but I'm just trying to get it off my desk. And then you get a response back in ten minutes anyway. So it's like, oh. So shall we let Don guide us, um, with a professional response to the hundred and five? And maybe Don could, if you're agreeable to that, um, maybe she could extend, um, I don't know what the next steps are. We're going to need to make another twenty-eight E agreement if we're going to go forward, similar to what we've done with both you and with Craig.
Well, let me ask the question then. If Wyatt's not the person, maybe his own choosing or someone else's choosing, you still want to go forward with the twenty-eight E with a, with a joint surveyor?
Uh, I'm very cautious because we're in a work session about making positive statements. I, I think I'm right in that. So I'm a little cautious about saying, yes, I'd love to go along with that because we're not supposed to in a work session do that.
Okay.
Right. We just generally look for just kind of consensus. So we, if someone wants...
What I'm trying to feel out is this about just one employee, or is this about a twenty-eight E agreement regardless of the employee? And, you know, and that could stand for Craig and Anthony, too, and I don't really know that, they, they were in place before I started. And so, um, you know, we want both of them here, but, uh, that's just a theme in my head. So if it's, if it's about more of the person, you negotiate the dollar amount and figure out the twenty-eight E. If it's about the twenty-eight E, you start with the twenty-eight E and/or negotiate with the person.
From my perspective, it'd be about the person.
Okay.
And then the twenty-eight E after that.
Yeah, then I would, to echo your comment, I would move forward with trying to, you know, secure an employment number that works good, and Don's done that in the past, a lot of good candidates.
And the twenty-eight E agreements are specific to individuals. It's what's listed in the twenty-eight E agreement. So this would be particular to this individual if he accepts a position. So we have next steps, and will I, Don, kind of work to make sure that it's agreeable to both of us as an action item as your calendar and ours will allow?
Definitely works. I think it'll work great, anyway.
Anything more that you would like to bring to our attention, or?
Opening up your courthouse so we could come?
Appreciate you coming all the way down here for it.
Well, I would love to be there and just walk you through there. You know, I was going to say, and it's not just the, the west campus, it's the shop that is the breathtaking piece that you're going, and Jeff, you're going to know that too. I don't know if you've seen the shop portion of our west campus.
I have not.
Wow.
Long way from the old one. If you saw the old one, then, uh, you'd be quite impressed.
I have followed the old one.
Yeah. I think you, that would be a wise thing. Would, would that allow with your schedule tonight to do that?
All the way back.
Do you have a meeting at five thirty?
Yeah, we do, yeah. Yeah.
I don't, I don't even think there's hardly anything on our meeting, Anthony.
I'm not on the agenda for anything.
Oh, you're not? So why don't, maybe that's the thing to do. Show them all the bells and whistles out there. Pretty amazing, amazing space. Well, it is going out to the public. It's, it's seven people, but they're, they're all county employees.
Thirty of them are here.
And I do know originally we met a lot more often. I think the reason we didn't continue meetings, everything went so smoothly and we never had any questions. And if we did, Anthony was able to, with you guys, help work it out. And so we just thought, maybe we shouldn't have done it that way. I'm just saying, we saw less and less need asked to meet and work through problems because they were already solved.
Right.
Everything was going so smooth, we just let it keep going. There's no sense in...
But I, I think if we also just talk about if we do a review or, or some kind of an official thing, it gives Anthony opportunity and Craig to say, is there something that, that maybe they, they would like to put forward to us, right? There's never an opportunity to do that because we're never actually taking the time to say, well, I mean, it works great for the, for the six of us, but what about over there? So, you know, I don't know if we're keeping up with standards and other things. So you'll work with Dawn and, and let us know if there's a necessity to do something like that.
Sounds good.
Very good.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
And a few years.
Nice meeting.
I was looking for a motion to recess until 5:30.
Don't move.
I will second that.
Motion to second to recess until 5:30. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hey, was that last rain?
Board of Supervisors, Slide 30 on Monday, August 30th, 2021 will bring the Board of Supervisors into session for our official evening meeting. We are also present on Zoom. The agenda will begin with opportunity for public comments. If you are joining us virtually, you may raise your hand, which is in the reactions button on Zoom, or you can also put a comment in the chat that you wish to speak and we will recognize you. If you are present and wish to address us personally in the boardroom, you would go to the podium and state your name and address and make your comments to the Board of Supervisors. At this time, this is about matters which are on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak to the board?
Is that green? Okay.
Molly Grover, the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce, 300 Main Street, Suite 200, right here in Dubuque, Iowa. Good evening, county supervisors. It's great to see you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight during the public comment section. I just wanted to reiterate the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce's position in support for the conservation bond referendum. And the chamber board met last week at our board meeting. By unanimous vote, they approved not only the request for the bond measure to go on the November 2nd ballot, but they also approved the bond measure in theory. And the reason behind this was several reasons. The first being the tremendous need, not only currently, but as we look to the future, for workforce needs. There is no sector of our business community that is untouched by the workforce shortage that exists right now. And we know investments in outdoor recreation activities and amenities in addition to water quality is a huge, not only retention tool, but attraction tool. It is something that our talent population really demands and wants in the places that they're going to live, work, and play, and to make a life. And so that is a tremendous asset and a good investment, not only right now, but in the future of our community and our overall vitality. Second, if we've learned anything over the past year and a half as it relates to COVID is the newfound appreciation for outdoor spaces in our community. Being able to enjoy the wonderful outdoor recreation spaces and the parks that we have in our community was certainly a lifeline for all of us as we needed to spend time and do things and escape the confines of our homes and enjoy nature and this beautiful scenery that Dubuque has to offer. So we're really excited about this potential proposed bond. We hope that you support our request to put it on the November 2nd ballot. I would entertain any questions if you have them for me.
I have nothing.
Thank you very much, Molly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Board of Supervisors? Do we have anyone virtually who wishes to be acknowledged? I don't see anything, but Nobody? All right. Very good. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of August 23rd, 2021. Were there any corrections?
I didn't see any. I'd make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
And I will second that.
Motion to second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. We do not have consent items. Fourth item is procurement procedures. We don't have any before us, nor do we have public hearings or approval of Platts. We will move to the action items, which is item number seven on the agenda. The board may approve, deny, or table any action item. The first action item appears to be a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies, assistants, and clerks.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Motion to second to approve the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. Next resolution is the bond referendum. The resolution has changed, I believe.
I think the resolution or packet is the same, but there's been some new information presented. So I'm believing Stella could enlighten us, or the county attorney, whoever was involved, or Brian Preston.
Well, let's put up Ed, share what we have on the ballot, or on the packet that went out for publication.
I'm going to share that.
So what is it that you're sharing, Stella?
Thank you. You want me to pass it down?
So what I'm sharing with the board now, and Ed is going to pull up and share on the screen, is-
Okay. So what you're sharing was not in the packet?
Correct.
So I'll give this to the reporter. We don't have this published to the public.
So this is a resolution that was drafted by legal counsel at Dorsey &amp; Whitney on a potential, the bond referendum question for the land and water legacy bond that we were talking about. So he reviewed the resolution that we had posted in our agenda and had modifications. So he preferred that we would act on this resolution, if we chose to act today. So that's the one I had sent out to you late last week.
Sorry to interrupt.
I can't hear you, Stella. So this is the proposed referendum language that came late Friday. I got it Saturday morning.
Yes. So the actual ballot language didn't have any modification, but the resolution itself, our counsel recommended that this format be used.
Right. At this time, I would move to table until we actually get this published.
I'd like to have some discussion, but I think that might be the right word.
And we will.
Maybe we could, I would prefer discussion first, but.
Well, do I have a second to my motion to table?
Jay wanted some discussion. I guess I was waiting. I have no problem with tabling it until we get, you know, for next week when we have it down the way it's supposed to be published properly.
I think, I would like, yes. So I would like to have discussion before.
Is that a second to my motion?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to second to table. Let's have discussion.
Can we do that in length with staff? I mean, I'd like to know the reasons we're tabling it. That's kind of what I'm getting at. Otherwise, the public doesn't know why we're tabling it.
We don't have the proper verbiage in the part that was published.
So we published our agenda appropriately, and I conferred with CJ, our county attorney, this morning to say, yes, we did publish appropriately. This was not included in the packet. A different item was included in the packet, which is, according to him, immaterial. And we could still act upon this if we choose to.
Does the county attorney have an opinion, and hopefully you would be the final answer on the document we would want to approve. So if you could comment on that, that's my question, is how should we proceed? Would you recommend that we make changes and come back next week? And have you reviewed one or both resolutions? I took a quick look at the resolutions. To me, it was a matter of the agenda. And so you have it on your agenda for the approval of a resolution. That resolution doesn't need to be published before you would approve it. So, I mean, whatever you choose to do today is certainly fine, but legally, I think you could go ahead and approve this resolution today if you would so choose. I think if you give it proper notice of it on your agenda, it's a tentative agenda, that resolution did not need to be published first before you would approve it. However, that's up to your discretion whether you would simply table it, go ahead and put it in the packet, publish it again, and then come back next week.
I appreciate that flexibility. Do you have a recommendation whether we should do that tonight, or table it till next week and do it?
I don't have a recommendation in that regard.
But you're saying we could do either?
You could do either, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I'd be curious to why we would wait then, but maybe these others can enlighten me why we would table if county attorney says we can move forward.
Well, I mean, I think this is going to be, this is critical, which is, I appreciate that this is the final language, and I appreciate that we got the bond attorney involved in this, and that we've gotten the final language from the bond attorney that makes this go forward legally with his perspective of what needs to be included. I would point out to my colleagues that there is new language added to this. The resolution reads that the Board of Supervisors has deemed it necessary and advisable that the county takes this action. Now, we have never used words of necessary and advisable. That may very well be that we feel that, but we've never had that conversation about whether this action is necessary and advisable. So there are things in this new resolution that we need to talk about, right? And there's nothing in this resolution that in any way binds the Board of Supervisors to the resolution that the Conservation Board made, which indicates percentages of division, of what percentage of the money may be spent on various projects. And those are identified and broken out in that prior resolution that in fact went out to publication. So folks may be, and there's people sitting in this room that I've made that representation to, that we're going to be bound by this, that there'll be a task force assigned to oversee things. None of that's in this final resolution. So I don't think it's wise to move forward on this until we get our other things, our other affairs in order too. And when you're looking at a resolution that sets something for bond with the final language, I don't think we should appear to be rushing. We meet every week as the Board of Supervisors. This can be properly put onto, with full disclosure, onto the agenda for next week. And we can have other discussion about whether or not we want to make changes, but I don't expect to take action on this this evening if we have these unknowns still out there. I mean, I'd like to see there be a clean resolution, which this man has prepared for us. And then another resolution that includes all the other information that we have worked with Conservation to set forth are the divisions that we've all seen repeatedly now, right, for the last few weeks. So it's a one, two step, but that isn't what we've told the public we're doing tonight. And I just think it's better to do it in a way that is appropriate with full disclosure. Those are my reasons.
Yeah, I'm comfortable tabling. I just wanted to understand, have the public understand why we're doing it. So I would generally agree, it'd be good to get a final document that we all know and support and appreciate the work of other councils coming in and trying to help us just a little out of order. And then ultimately, I would defer to our county attorney as the final stop. I appreciate, you know, the bond attorney, John Danos, I believe, who wrote this, appreciate his effort. But I would look to the county attorney, hopefully within the next few days, reviewing the final document that would be on our agenda next week. That's what I would like to proceed with.
But could we, and that's fine, we can do that. Does anyone share my concern that we should also have a second resolution that does something to accept, take formal action about what the Board of Conservation has told us they intend to do with the money?
Right.
Right. And it sets up, I mean, there's other policies and things in there, like the creation of the-
Their breakdown, Jay, is what, no.
I'm fine with, yeah, I think-
That should be in a separate resolution, is the information I had gotten from, I don't remember who I was talking to, that's supposed to be in a second resolution, so.
I think anything that the Conservation Board has approved, I think would be great if the Supervisors would approve or echo that same sentiment. I think that'd be great uniformity between our two boards. So I would totally support that as well.
So we come back with two resolutions next week?
I, you know, assuming that the county attorney thinks that's the proper way to go as well. This is the first time we've ever done this. I don't know if other counties have done that before, but that doesn't mean that we can't. We were just following best practices of the other five Iowa counties who have done this over the last 10, 15, 20 years, and it's worked well for them. And so that was the process that we followed from Conservation and generally staff and others were going off of. But yeah, if the board felt another resolution was warranted and valid, and the bond attorney and the county attorney were good with it, I'm good with it.
Will you get this done by next Monday, Stella?
Yes. This resolution is in final form, and I believe Ed has already drafted a separate resolution that would include those items that you're speaking of that were in the original resolution.
Correct. But this resolution you have here, this is the second resolution. Under my proposal, the first resolution will be the one that the bond attorney told us, set the proceedings in motion. We'll go to public hearing.
That is the one that's projected on the screen.
Okay. And then there's a, there's a second resolution that mirrors the one from the Conservation Board, which is in fact the one that was published today.
Right.
But it will delete the bond language.
Right.
Correct. Do you understand, Stella?
John is also, I believe, on the line if you have questions of him. I just wanted to let you know that.
I don't have any other questions, but.
Where was that section you were referring to, Ann, with the, on page two?
Section two.
The county necessary, whatever you mentioned.
Right here. The county has deemed it necessary and advisable. Is John on the phone?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, John. Yes, can you hear us?
I can, yeah, quite well. I've been following your conversation. This is John Danos with Dorsey &amp; Whitney in Des Moines. I've served as bond counsel to the county.
John, thank you for being with us. Yeah, we can't hear.
Of course.
Thank you for being with us here this evening. Um, the question that I have concerns the draft of the resolution that you have made, um, and it includes the, in the recital paragraph, the first recital, uh, the Board of Supervisors has deemed it necessary and advisable. That language has not been used by us before. Um, why is that included in this resolution? Is it required by statute or code?
It is not, no, and that language can be modified if you folks would like it to be modified. It's just a standard formulation, um, that we utilize in our proceedings, calling elections on bond issues. But it can be modified if you'd like it to be.
What might it be modified to? We have not determined it to be necessary and advisable. We've not done any formal determination of that.
I think that the point would be that you're deeming it necessary and advisable to call the election. Right?
Yeah, I understand that part.
Necessary by law. John, is your firm, this is Supervisor Wickham, has your firm represented in any of the other counties that have passed this type of ballot initiative?
Uh.
Johnson, Lynn, Polk, Warren.
We, we do Johnson and, Johnson and Lynn, we do not, not do Polk or Warren.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I am not suggesting that this isn't a good standard. I think it's a, it's an appropriate standard if you're going to take a bond referendum out to your voters to vote on a forty million dollar referendum, I think it's a good standard to meet. I was just simply pointing out, we've never had a discussion about this, that's never been put into that kind of context, right? So that's one of the reasons that we're, we're meeting here this evening is to talk about that. And when the Chamber of Commerce comes here and says, we think that it's obvious it's time to do this, I kind of think that meets the necessary and advisable standard, as well as other folks who have come to me and said, you really should do this, it's necessary, it's time. So I don't, I'm not doubting that we could meet that, and maybe we individually feel that, but it is language we've never talked about before in this matter.
I guess, John, kind of clarified it a little better, that we're, all we're saying is it's necessary and advisable to put it on the ballot, which I said from the start, that I didn't feel it was my place to say, no, you can't put it on the ballot, because I'm not paying it. It's the property owners that are paying the bill. It's up to the property, the taxpayers, so it is necessary to go on to the ballot, is the way I'm looking at it. No.
I'd agree.
Are we fine with that language then, without any modification from?
I, I am fine with it if our county attorney is as well. But, you know, we, we've got a couple other days, you don't have to. I, I mean, I think the process of, you know, working with, uh, John Danos and yourself and others, and, you know, so to speak, blessing the language in the documents that come to us, that's usually what we look for your guidance with.
So do we wish to have any change there? Are we good with the language?
I think I'm good with the language, you know.
Well, this is, we have a motion to table before us, but this is, um, you know, the time to make any other changes to the document.
I think.
Got to get this on the ballot by the sixteenth of September, or we will have missed it.
That's why I asked Stella if she was going to have enough time to get this done this week with Ed and CJ, whatever changes needed to be made and.
So this is in final format unless you would have some modification. CJ, I'm sure will take time to look at this, um, this week, and it would be in final format for any kind of, of vote from the board.
Right, and the second resolution is just basically going to be the resolution from the Conservation Board.
Just removing the bond language. The final paragraphs will be deleted when it talks about the bond language.
Right, just.
Can you share that, Ed?
That we have the, the breakdown of how the money's being spent.
Exactly.
Right, that's.
That's the document we've not seen yet. I mean, we've seen it several times, it's just not shared on our screen right now.
Yeah, I'm okay getting all those ready for next week.
Is there further discussion on my motion?
None for me.
I, I don't see anything that needs changing unless you have some other items that you want changed or.
We just want to have an addition of another resolution as well, prepared for, for next week.
Correct. We want to keep section one and section two in our second resolution, and then if you move down further, where is the language? Did you make a change, Ed?
This represents a simplified resolution that shows, uh, a, a, a few preambles noting that you are setting a date for the election, uh, and that these two sections, one echoing the Conservation Board's percentages as, as targets, as well as the public disclosure sort of bullet points that were in the Conservation Board's, uh, petition as well. So it really just is echoing those two, two things that were in the draft that was in today's packet, but that were bond counsel suggested be pulled out. I've just created a new resolution where those are the now therefore be it resolved sections. If there's other things, you can add them in, or if I've made an omission.
This is what you drafted this afternoon?
Just actually, well, I was sitting right there, Anne, yes.
I'm just trying to, this is not what was published.
It is not.
Okay.
It, I just, this is a document on my laptop that I wrote while you were talking with Delaware County.
Right, and I may, I would like to see this, I'm not saying we're fine with this, but, yeah, ID is there.
Yes, so, yes, so that, we will circulate this to all of you and the county attorney, um, if, if there's something else you would like to see in there, but it is just no creative writing, it is just really some excerpts from the last resolution with all of the language about setting a bond date out. What it does do is reference that you did set a bond date, because this will be the second resolution, as you've talked about it, you will set a bond referendum date, and then the next action item would be something like this that provides some clarity to the public about how you will administer that program.
So the public has all the information, that's what I want.
Right, so we have a document ready to circulate for you for comments to go into the packet for next meeting.
Is there other discussion?
I think just to change the date on the bottom and we'd be good to go. Yep, so, yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with getting that document along with the other resolution that's presented tonight, prepared for next week.
So to my motion to table, is ready for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next resolution is to approve the allocation of funds from Dubuque County Eco Services Program.
Eric's on the line.
Good evening, I am on the line. Uh, yeah, so this is a follow-up resolution from the presentation from last week's meeting, specifically talking about three projects that NRCS has surveyed and designed, and this resolution is seeking your approval for funding listed and. And, um, this would give the landlords to proceed with giving, uh, cost estimates from area contractors for these projects. Uh, final cost invoices, as well as final signed maintenance agreements would come before you at a separate resolution after these structures are built and completed and certified by NRCS. So this resolution is simply stating the estimates, NRCS estimates not to exceed amount, those are, those are not the amount. Uh, I will come back with a separate contract with actual invoices after the projects are completed.
Does anyone have any questions for Eric? Anyone wish to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I'd make the motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Motion to second to approve the resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are communication items. The first relates to the jail inspection report. The next is a mo, is a application for annexation from Sageville. I wouldn't mind actually taking that for just a moment and setting that aside, if that's okay. I'd like to talk about that one.
Maybe I'll, I'll make a motion to receive and file the jail inspection report.
I will second that.
Motion to second to receive and file the jail inspection report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Next is the receive and file of the application for annexation from Sageville. Um, we have a variety of documents that Sageville has submitted, and I believe our auditor and our, uh, GIS administrator is working with the city of Sageville to make sure that we're stepping through all this correctly. So, um, and the mayor of Sageville is here with us tonight as well. I don't know if that's something we want to hear his broad perspective on, if he wishes to give us a couple minutes.
I'm always open, a lot of times our meetings are slow and quiet, so probably it's great when the public shows up. And elected officials.
All right, so we had, uh, six different individuals, um, come to us and request, by application, volunteer annexation.
Could you introduce yourself for us on the record?
Wayne Kenner, 11645, Lizer Lane, also the mayor of Sageville. So as I was saying, we had six individuals that came to us requesting volunteer annexation into the city of Sageville. Um, four of those parcels, uh, are on Mud Lake Road, near the intersection of Cheryl Road. Um, those individuals' primary reason for requesting annexation was to be able to access high-speed internet. Currently down in the valley, we do not have, uh, any good, I'll call it, uh, wireless or site, uh, avenues, and because Sageville does have, uh, a cable franchise with MediaCom, if they were annexed into the city of Sageville, it would allow those four homes, uh, access to high-speed internet. Um, the other two parcels, um, one is off of Rapala Road, uh, an individual, uh, part of his property is in the county, part of the property is in the city of Sageville. He would like to have it all under one jurisdiction, and he is, that's his reason for requesting annexation. Um, the other individual is a, a business, uh, on Highway Three, uh, near the northwest arterial. Part of his property is in the county, and part of the co, his property is in the city of Sageville, and also would like his property under one jurisdiction as the city of Sageville. So that's why those annexations came to us, and why we have brought them to the county.
So we may, the auditor is reviewing those documents, and GIS are reviewing the documents, and we may have a work session on them in the future, but right now, I very much appreciate your bringing them to us.
All right.
And just the receive and file is the action that we would normally take with regard to these documents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. I would make the motion to receive and file the application for annexation.
I will second that.
Motion to second to receive and file, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Our final communication is, um, um, how to summarize, from the city of Dubuque regarding the taxing bodies. It's the urban renewal plan, basically, the extension of that.
I'd make the motion to receive and file unless someone has discussion on it.
I will second that motion.
Motion to second, um, to receive and file, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Next is the appointments. Uh, we have applications for the Disabilities Council, and I see that we have our department director here. Um, if I might ask Dr. Ann Cameron Williams, just to be recognized. Do you want to step forward, Ann? We have two applications before us, and I, I apologize, but I believe you sent us a note, so what, would you have a recommendation for us?
I do have a recommendation. Um, of the two individuals, um, the, um, can you, Ed, could you just go for the names? I'm always so bad at names. We have two individuals applying from the same family, and we're very appreciative that both Kimberly, who is, I believe, the mother of a, a child with a disability, and Luke, who is the sibling of the child with a disability in the same family. Um, at this time, I would recommend that we appoint Kimberly, Maura Rand, if I'm saying that correctly, um, as, we would like to reserve the remaining three positions on the council for people that represent diverse ethnicities and minorities, multicultural families, and that would be the reason, um, one of the reasons that I would make that recommendation. Uh, the second reason for that recommendation is that Mr. Luke appears to be in high school, um, and he is, um, in his application, he's announced that he is probably going to Iowa State next fall, um, and, um, that, that, um, you know, we've got some of the, uh, the terms are longer than just a few months, and I just think at this time, we certainly invite Luke to join us. It's a public meeting, a monthly meeting, um, but at this time, um, I would just recommend Kimberly to be the person that would be considered for appointment by you.
So the approval of Kimberly is what you're recommending at this time?
Correct.
And you'll be in communication with both of them?
Absolutely, I'm on their voicemail already, so, yes.
Does anyone have questions?
I have none. I would make the motion to approve Kimberly.
And I will second that.
If a motion is second to approve Kimberly, Maura Rand?
Oh, with the term, the term thing. Any recommendations there?
Uh, I can make the recommendation for the term after this meeting if you'd like, or if we have to do it right now. Right now, well, let's just say Kimberly is going to be for the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make the motion to appoint Kimberly to the term ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
And I will second that.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ann, if you'd be in communication and express that to Luke as well.
Sure will, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Next on the agenda are the open vacancies, um, and the date of that was August eleventh, so just pointing that out, if anyone wishes to pull that forward for comment or discussion. Moving on the agenda next is personnel requisitions. We have one requisition for Cork III for treasurer. And this position, as I understand it, actually is open right now.
I would say with Dawn being absent and the treasurer not available at this meeting, I would look to table. So I will make that motion.
I would second.
Motion to second to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Um, that concludes our formal agenda. At this time, there's opportunity for public comment. If there's a matter which you wish to address with the Board of Supervisors, you may do so at this time. In person, you can go to the podium, state your name and home address. On Zoom, you may, um, raise your hand in the reactions button at the bottom of your screen, or enter a comment in the chat section, and we would, um, unmute you and, um, be interested in your comments. Ed, are you making public comment?
I'm moving the mouse.
I just wanted to be sure, we don't have anyone, we do not have anyone approaching the board in chambers, do we have anyone virtually indicating they wish to speak?
I don't see anyone on the list here that has raised their hand. Here, McDonald.
Very good. Our next meeting, I believe, is Tuesday, September seventh?
Yes.
Will be here in the boardroom. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
And I will second that.
Motion to second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone.